This is Ohio City Council session is not a public hearing. So if time permits, we may ask for audience input. But it is not a public meeting, public hearing or public meeting that requires input. So we are not scheduled to have it. Having said that, we want to hear your input after this meeting and tomorrow and the next day, the next day until we can say that whose Hickory has been finished. This is going to be a very long time. We do want your input, your questions, your thoughts, the things you agree on, the things you disagree on. I will warn you that this is going to be our inspiring spaces. It's not going to be mine, it's not going to be Mr. Perry's, it's not going to be Dave's, etc. It's going to be our inspiring spaces and there will be pieces of it that you'd say, "I don't think I'd have done that." And that's just the way it's going to be because we're going to have dozens, if not hundreds, of people. Thank you for being here. I really appreciate the interest that's shown by those of you who have come to this meeting. And we'll get started.
Thanks, Mayor. What we want to do first, just to give you a quick outline of the agenda we put together for you all today is going to have Mr. Wood kind of give you an overview of all the next steps in bond process. And then he's also going to share with you with Mike Wood's help, Socrata, the software service that he licensed to put all the financial information out there, just kind of help everybody see how that works. After that, we'll have Andrea spend some time talking about broad community engagement, again, and other software services that we've been looking at and just kind of discuss how that works, how the communities are using that. After Andrea does that, I've got a little handout that kind of captures the thoughts that staff has had about the citizen committee and how we could work through that together to give you all a kind of a starting point for your discussion about, you know, structure of the community and these are getting into kind of all the details there. So with that, I want to turn it over to you.
Okay. This is going to be part of this section. I'm going to have a few examples. I'll make 25 copies of it, a lot of them we didn't have. But here's just, you can just take it and work it past around. Part of what we're going to do here is go through a pretty extensive list of the processes going to be involved. And a lot of this is going to relate to managing expectations from the public in terms of timing. You can example, Worsel had a bond referendum passed in early fall of May. They're going to receive their first proceeds from bond sales in February. That's 10 months. And that would be probably aggressive for what we're looking at. So I'm going to walk through a few things here and just keep in mind that there's a number of steps and phases that we're going to go through. Each one of these steps has a lot of initial steps that I don't have included. We're going to talk about a little bit this today. So we're in phase one of implementation of the bond project process. And at your next city council meeting, you're going to certify the results of the bond referendum, the next city council meeting. One of the things we're going to talk about today, setting up a citizen-based bond support committee. Andrea's going to go over some software that we're going to install on the city's website related to gathering public input. We'll talk a little bit about that same sort of thing, except on the financial side. We're also going to invest in some software to get our financials out there related to these individual bond projects, where we are, how much money we spent, what the projects are, the status and that sort of thing. We're also currently working on an RFQ for selection of a program administrator. This is something that's been right heard, so to speak, over this whole process from us, for us, that will come from a firm that has a lot of resources, yet you can flip those off the map if you'd like. It has a lot of resources that we don't have in-house that's going to allow us to navigate and coordinate through this process. So that's phase one. So we're teeing a lot of stuff up, we're getting going. We're still, the bond referendum was approved in November, we're still in November, we're making good, good gateway. Phase two will be a pretty lengthy part of this process. And how we go about this is yet to be discussed. The city council will ultimately approve the priority and the phasing of the projects we're going to undertake. There'll be a lot of work that goes into that. And then once we know the projects, we'll know what kind of design firms we need for those individual projects. So we'll be in a position to solicit qualification for design firms for the engineering and design. And then we'll start a process of going, contacting the LGC, local government commission. They oversee all we do related to bond process and how we spend this money and they have to be key in, so we'll start contacting them. And then we'll solicit bids after construction is, after design is complete, we'll solicit bids for the first round of projects. And there may be, there will more than likely be multiple rounds of projects, so that will be the first, first phase. Phase three is really a pretty quick phase on the scale of things and that relates back to, ultimately, we're going to have to go to New York if we don't do it over, over a conference call to get in front of bond rating agencies to have our bond rating upgraded. So that's going to be part of this process. We did that in '09 in anticipation of some revenue bonds.
We came back to the middle range.
And we, then we went up there with it.
That's right.
So hopefully that don't happen again. That'll be part of the process. And again, LGC has a lot of, they put a lot of information together between getting our bonds teed up for sale, through to phase three. And then phase four is where the referendum hits the road in terms of city council will award the construction bids, will begin construction, set the property tax rate, property tax rate to enable service to debt and start paying our debt back. So that's, that's a long, that is a long process. And again, there'll be multiple pieces of that because we'll have more than one phase. If that makes sense. So, for the message here to the crowd too, just to manage the expectation, we're not going to be able to go out and turn dirt on these projects next month. It's going to be, it could be up to a year, you know, how quickly the, how quickly some of the things go.
Well, we don't have a period.
No.
We don't have a period for a lot of the work.
Some of those things will be happening in current, second half of the year.
Well, we've been making decisions prior to that, before we had the project manager.
I think we want that expertise in terms of engineering. It makes sense to do this project first, this phase first, but I wouldn't want to get ahead of ourselves. I think it'd be very optimal as we go through it. We're going to have the, we're going to have the project manager or project administrator who will, who will take place in the next month.
The longer the items may look like, construction drawings.
Yes.
And price.
Yes.
And those are things that we would need to have in hand before we sell the bond, like certainly in other ones like that.
Correct. We have to go to the LGC with our numbers in hand. This is what will cost us. And that's the, that's the size of construction, that's the longest phase. So that, that kind of lays out the process. It's kind of real high level, like, so there's a lot of steps to one of these things. So, and again, Worsel, you know, just using them as an example, that was a 10-month process for them, so we're looking at at least that. Okay. So we're going to talk about two things that were in phase one now. The public input software and the financial reporting software that we're going to install on the city's website. The bond referendum told me three things. The majority of the voters liked the projects that they saw. They were willing to have their taxes raised to pay for it and they trust you all to get it done. So in, related to the trust part, we need to focus on two things. We need to focus on inclusiveness, which is what Andrea's going to go over with this software, and transparency, which is what I'm going to go over when we talk about the numbers. Being very transparent, very inclusive through this whole process. And again, investing in some software that'll give us some tools that we don't currently have that'll allow us to do that. So any questions so far before we roll into Andrea's presentation? Okay. Andrea?
Thanks, Maureen. So you have your seat, or I've passed out a flyer, but we'll, we'll look at it just a moment, so just find that. But first I wanted to show a short video that explains a web application that is being used across the country for citizen engagement, especially when it relates to particular projects. And so in the planning world, a lot of times now, people are finding that it's hard to get people to come to a public meeting, maybe they're at the wrong time of day for some people, things like that. So this company has tried to overcome those obstacles and provide, provide an opportunity for people to engage online, the projects related to a bond or maybe some other type of citizen improvement, citizen engagement project. So let's watch the video, it takes about three minutes, and then we'll go into some more details.
We've done lots and lots of traditional level meetings and the meetings tend to be not well attended, they tend to be a not very diverse group of people. And the unfortunate part about that for communities, they make lots of decisions based on a very small sample size of participants.
Government doesn't usually look towards citizens for solutions. They look towards citizens to consume solutions.
CodeFirica is a nonprofit. We even call ourselves something with Peace Corporate Geeks. What we're trying to do is help bridge the technology and the talent inside the private sector, inside city hall, inside the public sector, try to make our governments work better for everyone.
We started MindMixer because we believe people want to contribute to their communities. They want to do it in a convenient manner. They want to do it and believe that there's transparency involved in decision-making in their organizations. And what we found that works fantastic in government settings, we've also found that works great in business settings and in school settings to better engage parents or employees, people that want to be involved in the decision-making process.
We're really passionate about finding the most interesting, promising startups, companies providing technology to cities and giving them support they need to scale. And this year we launched our inaugural program, the CFA Accelerator, and out of 235 companies that apply, we selected MindMixer as one of our seven because of the important work that they're doing to help citizens and cities connect with each other.
By having this platform, people can engage with issues that they face in their city from sort of the comfort of their workplace or home.
MindMixer is unique in that it creates an environment where people feel empowered to be involved. And when you feel empowered to be involved, the first step to that is sharing your ideas.
Some of the citizens that we have been able to engage with as a result of the platform, they commonly say things like, "I've never interacted with government before outside of paying a parking ticket or paying my taxes." And they can't believe that we are on the receiving side of this and that we actually talk back to them.
As the process moves along, it facilitates action. So the organizations that we partner with, they're committed to action.
Now we kind of see ourselves in the position of facilitating the ability for solutions coming from citizens to be implemented as opposed to just being solution providers ourself. But I think on its most basic level, it's creating a positive experience for citizens.
People want to come back. They want to stay engaged with the organization and the community.
I like to think that citizen engagement is a lever. We think, we see that whenever one great activity happens, it tends to lead to more. So we have these events, they're called hackathons, they bring the other developers, build something that's on the internet. And you think there are five, 10 people who show up, hundreds do. And this is like on the weekend when they want to be relaxing. That's because they care. And then after that happens in one city, it tends to happen to another and then another and then another. And that's the movement.
So there's something bigger at play. The world, our communities, our schools are facing challenges that we've never faced before. Giving people a voice to be involved, allowing them to be contributors to their communities is what's going to help us move from stagnant challenges to actionable steps. It's important for us, when we talk to people, to ask them, "What are you doing to engage people in your community?"
So the company is called MindMixer. Feel free to Google that and come up on their web, go to their website or go to these YouTube videos. That is a, is a tool, it's a group out there that provides us with a service that is hard to duplicate in-house and it's something that we haven't used before in a, in a really comprehensive manner, but cities are moving toward that. So there are a number of cities across even just North Carolina that are using it and I'll show you those in a minute. This is a go-to-handout, it's an easy way to articulate what it is. But, you know, we know some things about the bond referendum. We have big broad categories. We've had a great process through inspiring spaces to develop some of the projects and then of course the Business Park evolved outside of that but still related. And so with those big broad topics, then we, there's still opportunities, a lot of opportunities to have citizen input to guide this process for actually designing and building some of the amenities that are provided from those funds. So the handout just talks in general terms about why citizens want to have a little more input and why this tool works to provide that. So you can just sort of see at the very top, you know, I won't read it all to you, but you know, people see what they see on the ground and there, and there is a process that gets those details developed. And so really, they're, they're adding maybe just something as simple as park benches or small park space to a broader greenway project. But it's really important for people to have an opportunity to weigh in on details related to a space. And that makes it more personal to them and then when they use it, they remember that they were part of that design process. So, so that's just really a sort of changing the community perception about how things get designed is to add in the citizen involvement into that piece. And so you can just sort of scroll down through that, that list of what the, how perception becomes reality, where those decisions are made and what the public gets a chance to provide input, input to. So that's just a handout, just to cue you out to the company itself. Cities enter into a contract for three years or five years for a very non-farm fee, just a few hundred dollars a month. And in fact, the, the price is, I'll use here right here, price 3150 per year for a three-year contract and $2,275 per year for a five-year contract. So it's online, it's a service, it's just like what you would do to enhance maybe, you know, your personal finance, you want, maybe you wouldn't pay that. But at a city level where you're asking for all of the input for citizens, there's a, there's now a service that is handled off-site. And then we as city staff and, and also a lot of the committee and council monitor the input and then can guide that. So let's go through what one looks like. And I just picked Wilmington, but you could look at Raleigh's website, they have one for their Parks and Recreation Bond. The number, City of Charlotte has one for their IT services, but Wilmington has one recently for a number of projects. They use it extensively. So the first thing that you see here is that it's a, it's a template at the top where you can say, you know, we, we brand this related to Hickory and then you would have, scroll down through. And you sign up. So it's a sign up through Facebook or Google Plus, some sort of social media sign up. So anonymous comments are not allowed, you do tie it back to a citizen, but you can sign up. And so then it just allows you to pose a series of questions and those questions are related to the projects that we decided to tackle. And in this case, and then let's go back to the people. Right here, yeah. So joining the conversation, that's where your, maybe your Facebook icon pops up for your, your account. And so that's who's joining, that's who's conversing on that option and then the city would scroll down a little bit. And then we've got the project in particular, this was the North Waterfront Park in Wilmington. So they've got some photos they upload, they ask questions and there's a description, you can scroll down and then it's through the row of people. Okay, so who's listening? So then you would know not only that someone in local government's paying attention to it, but actually which staff people are watching the feedback that comes in. And it comes in back through MindMixer, but we have access to that data. And so you, in this case, Dylan Lee is the Mandy Pitts equivalent in Wilmington and so as well as a planner, two senior planners of the City of Wilmington. So that just tells you sort of how they're monitoring this particular project. And let's go to the, so I'm going to show you a particular kind of project. So this is just an example of North Waterfront Park. They've got plans for that area, they have topics on that discussion and you can go on the web and find this site yourself and drill down a little further. But, okay, good. So now you can, they've been asking people what do we, what do we need to do? And so they put in a number of ideas. And so these are, just your ideas that you might have and then people vote on them, click on them, like them. It continues the conversation. And so it can be as broad or as specific as a poll that asks you, "Do you like this, this, this or this amenity for the riverfront park?" Or do you have ideas for streetscapes? Which streets maybe should have the priority? Things like that. We can develop those questions broadly or narrowly and really drop those on. Updating the site about once or twice a week with questions to keep it active. And then as we go through the process, then you can always check back in and see what the conversation is. You can find out how many days are remaining to have some feedback on a particular question. So they aren't open-ended forever, they stay open for a specific period of time and then they close and then you can see the conversation. But this is ideal for reaching a broader audience in Hickory. And so we feel like it's important now that we're moving forward with the bonds to have a chance for people to have input. So this commute, the committee could use this tool and develop questions and then so many more people could take their 10 minutes out of their evening or, or morning or at their lunch break at their desk and weigh in on, on these topics. And we find that it's going to be exceptionally helpful. So that's a draw brush, just happy to answer questions or we'll come back to it again. But just look it up and check out sites that are related to North Carolina in particular that'll be helpful.
Following along with the trust thing, obviously this touches on the inclusiveness part of the equation. And thinking about transparency also related building trust with the community, obviously our, we have a financial software package with the city that's 20 years old and I've worked with it for 20 years and I understand it. It's not very dynamic in terms of, one of my great pleasures in life is making city council suffer through our quarterly financial report. So what you're, what you're going to see is a tool that'll allow us to really present information that we're going to have related to the bond referendum and also the annual budget and other financial matters that we have in a, in a way that is more consumable for the public. You can't get this with our static kind of finance package that we have, so this is a add-on, draws information out of our finance, financial system and will allow us to present information on various projects related to the bond referendum, even being able to click on, click on the map and give a, give you an example or a summary of what the project is and then where you are in various stages of the project. You want to kind of walk through?
Sure, yeah, me too. Yeah, it presented, this is the opening page, this is a demo page that we've set up with actual Hickory data. It is the current year budget for 2015. You can see on this side of the screen is the actual budget of the various categories. And on this side of the screen is the capital budget information, the currently active projects that are using capital budget dollars. This map also shows where they are located in the city for the projects that are going on. The size of the circle is indicative of the number of dollars relative to it.
And think about this, it relates to the projects in the bond referendum because this is, this is really the main way we're going to use it out of the case.
Right, we'll see more in this area around the waterfront or through downtown, wherever the streets are being upgraded or improved. You can drill down on any of these items here. For example, I can click on the government, general government information to get the next level of detail. I can click on one of these to go a little bit deeper into the budget. I can see, by clicking on this, I can go down to the landscape budget and keep it drilling down deeper and deeper until we get to some very specific information about where those dollars are going. You'll notice on the side here, there's two options. I can present the data in a bar chart, which is the default, or I can display it in a table type format, which allows you to scroll through it. And one other feature is the ability to download the raw data. So when you see that in a table form, you can click on the, on the button there and it drops it right into Excel for you. And so you can retain that data and sort it and slice it, dice it all you want.
So you won't be able to get much more transparent with the numbers than what this tool is going to allow us to do. Folks can go online to the city's website and be able to attach into this information once the project's been up and running. Again, this is, this is not going to be exclusive to the bond. No, we'll use it, we can use it for the annual budget and other capital projects that we have in addition to that.
Yeah, this currently is the budget and this kind of static, it's established and adopted and improved and that's what it's going to be for the year. This site is the site that'll be seeing some changes because projects will change and get completed as, as time goes on. You can drill down through those to get more specific as well. And we can go down to the project level and it actually will show you on the screen where that project is occurring in the map. You can see where the finances are coming from.
Does the city stand up make this or does it provide?
We update it as frequently as we want.
It's easy to update, you're just pulling information up, it's just all on.
It literally takes me like two minutes to update all this data. It's really easy to do. If I drill down, let's go into one that has a little different breakout on the funding. This is the radio frequency changes. You can see that we have federal revenues, we've got other financing sources and we've got local government revenues. So you can actually see how much of it is local taxes that are going into it versus federal or state monies that you might be able to receive. It shows it over time as well. There's one other piece that I'm still working with them on getting this going that will show the status of the project across here, whether it's in the design phase, it's approved, it's in construction, it's completed, you know, it shows you the progress of the project and its current status. One other thing is you can also have the ability to link a specific project to a particular website. And in this case, I just linked this to, actually I clicked on the wrong one, so, this is test data still, like, okay. If I click on the parking deck, for example, and I go to that project. Should be down there. I'll go to the airport one. If I go to the airport project and see what's going on with it and look at what's the plan of this project website, I can link to a website that's outside of this product, the Socrata product, can go directly to whatever website I want relative to the project. And so with these capital projects from the bonds, we are planning on the significant ones having websites set up for each of them, but the fore and after pictures or conceptual drawings or whatever it might be.
Who gets paid for the ads?
I'm sorry?
Who gets paid for the ads?
This is a, this is just an airport website and these ads are related to this particular site. So I kind of, I left our.
They get this from MindMixer or the airport?
No, this, that was, I just picked the website related to the airport. That's not our website.
Their advertising website.
But the three. Right, but there are other things we can do. If we look at the water and sewer capital budget or this project here, I actually linked that to a document in our, on our city's website that's a PDF and you can call that PDF up directly. Just because of the circumstances here at this place, I can't do that right now, but we can link it to any page on our, on our city's website, any document that's on that page and go directly into a PDF or Word document or, or something of that nature. This site is publishing public information and so it's completely open.
I'll make it as far as take that information.
Oh, it's very tight. I'm the only one right now who has access to this data and I'm the only one authorized to update it in any way.
It'll be a powerful tool for folks that really want to drill down in the numbers, the official form as well as find out the stats and where we are with the various processes. We'll be updating it regularly, so.
Yeah, it navigates pretty cleanly. This always gets you to the main page and we have the little order here about the city and gives you some details.
Yeah, if you scroll down the map.
Uh huh.
And then, no, yeah, not on the project, yeah, it's in the map. So it's going to give us.
Yeah, right now, I've sent them the shape file yesterday that they will include in the map here, so it'll give us the city limits in total.
Right.
We'll be able to see the whole area basically.
Right. So for some of our projects that, or all of our, almost all of our projects, take the city walk, for example.
Right.
We'll be able to demonstrate that sort of. Um, well, we'll be able to demonstrate that sort of geospatially.
Yes.
As opposed to just that little Google dot, you know, map. Do you understand my question?
Yeah, I do. And, and the, the work to actually present a, a more, like, an aerial view, or something like that, would be based on the website relative to that particular project.
We just link to the plan, basically. You would link to the plan, which could then show.
Exactly.
Or get some kind of Google map or something that you'd use it to get people to just know how it's gonna look and everything.
Yeah, this, this particular product, Socrata, is designed to present financial information. It's not really a project status kind of website, but we will do, we'll provide that, that the project is.
Pull up the, pull up the, uh, the one down there, just the, the PDF, Mike, let's switch from Socrata to the PDF, or the mockup of the webpage that we're working on.
Oh, right.
Because that's kind of getting what Brad's saying. So, so we're kind of saying, we kind of started on the Socrata piece, and it showed how you can, you can click back to, you know, project updates in as much detail as you want. With this page, did you have anything else I wanted to, or just kind of flow, flow through? But this page is just a mockup of what we see as being kind of your, let's just say, your main homepage. So here you actually have the Socrata stuff that's being displayed, so if you just want to drill into financials page, you can go down the side of pipe with the display. Here you have the My Mixer piece, so if you want to comment on it. But you've also got one landing place that's dynamic, where all of the projects is an overview of it, and current updates, and then you can just keep drilling down as deep as you want to go. Does that make sense? So if you're here, and you want to look at details, Mike showed how that happens. If you're here and want to look at details, same thing, it all is one big circle that you can find your way in and out, comment, and see the financials and everything.
You said you'll keep updating pictures of, or during and after.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, all kinds of stuff, on plans, you know, draft plans, minutes of committee meetings, minutes of city council meetings, I mean, basically a repository for all of the information, all the feedback that's circling around, you know, all the projects that are out there. Is that where you, do you see the program administrator doing that? Or you see the staff person? And that's sort of my thing, is we need somebody on staff that sort of owns this thing. Yeah, I think, I think the, uh, I think the information will be somewhat created by the program administrator, but I think it will be filled in three staff and then updated by staff in here. We haven't gotten to quite that level of detail yet, but generally I think that's how we see it working. That's a good question.
How can we make this as user-friendly as possible for people who aren't comfortable with the internet at all? And secondly, uh, how do we make access available to people who don't have it?
That's, that's a great question. Um, first of all, I think you've already got the internet availability at both public libraries.
What I was thinking is, could we, could we have computers devoted to this, at both libraries, that are always signed on? I'm one of these long timers, and I'm frustrated if I say, darn it, don't tell me the register I already have. Get a way that they can go to it at any time, and, you know, feel comfortable, do anything you want to with this. You don't have to worry, you're not gonna mess anything up. I mean, I thought it was pretty basic here with a lot of people out there in that boat. And then, uh, second thing, is there an answer version? I don't think you get as many calls, I don't think you get too many calls.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is have Sarah's picture.
(laughter) So, right. And, and, well, and to your point, Mayor, I mean, I, yeah, we've just spent a lot of time on this, but that, that's not to say that all of the other channels that, that Mandy and Dana and Patrick have developed to communicate, I mean, we got the city centers, everybody that gets a water bill from the city gets that. That's a perfect place where you can give updates, um, phone numbers, et cetera. Community, going out and having, you know, our neighborhood meetings and stuff. I mean, I see us at, at certain points where, you know, there's obviously something going on, or decisions are being made, that we go out there, we go to civic clubs, and we go to the neighborhood groups, and we make presentations, and we just talk.
We really don't replace it, they just wanna pass it.
It just keeps happening, we're, now with technology, it just keeps happening.
I don't want people frustrated because they say, other people have access to this, because I'm not technologically savvy. Uh, we could also add, we could also add, at least as long as those are in, we could have a monthly lesson, and how to, how to use your citizen-friendly websites, and let people come and ask questions about it, let people...
Where's Louise? Yeah, that's a perfect program for the library to help us. I mean, we do that kind of stuff all the time anyway, you know, you're great for it.
I, I just, I, I want, now, now the, everybody under 10's will be able to fit this in.
That we know from the smartphone.
And, and even I would be able to actually have a certain part of it. But we need to have that.[936.12][936.12](laughter) But I do think it's important that we remember the people who, uh, we would love to have access to this, just the way everyone else does.
Very, very good.
I, I agree with you, Mayor. I heard one thing that I want to be clear on. And as you said, we all, you'd be always signed on, people just go through. I think it's important that if you're commenting and you're participating in the conversation, that we have an idea of who you are. Um, because it'd be the same if you were at a public meeting, you couldn't speak anonymously at a public meeting. I think that's just sort of, uh, the purity of process, if that makes sense.
So if you were accessing one without signing in, you, it wouldn't be too bad?
Well, yeah, you wouldn't know who it was, and you could just end up with a bunch of anonymous comments, and you don't really know what to do with it.
But you just set it up so that if those computers, you can't access the comments section?
Well, yeah, we, we kind of made it real random, but, you know, I mean, this, this site is designed to only allow comment if you log in. Now, your login, of course, is not specific to any machine. So let's say you don't have access to a computer at home, you go to one of our libraries, you go to a Parks and Rec Center, where they've got a kiosk, in effect, set up like you're talking about, Mayor. You can sit in, and you can sign in as yourself, and you can comment all day long. But yeah, it really, it really does not allow for this anonymous public comment. And if you think about it, you really have evolved past, I mean, Hickory day director, without the login, if you're gonna leave a comment on a story, you know, people need to know who you are.
Well, two ways will also work, or, calling in to know who they're speaking to, be it Sarah, Mayor.
Sure, yep.
That gets back to the who's listening.
Yeah.
And, 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 once, once the first, once the citizenry has signed up in this, we can also poll them, we can send a, broadcast an email to them saying, hey, we're thinking about doing this, what are, what are your thoughts? And invite them to come on and respond.
Yeah, you could, yeah, you could, you could comment on such and such on the Riverfront. The plan just came back, take a look at it and see what you think, you know, that's kind of, yes, it's too late, right. Take a look at it, tell us what's true.
(inaudible).
If you signed up when you were commenting on one, then you'll get a message back saying, okay, we just updated that site, and the plan's version is out there, go check it out, yep.
And we've seen on a lot of, some of the examples where it's been used, where somebody will send in an idea, and the people who are listening will reply right away and say, that's a great idea, and maybe we can also do this in addition to that, or, you know, they'll embellish something.
Well, and other citizens.
All right, and other citizens do.
You know, I mean, somebody puts an idea, and two other citizens say, that's a great idea, and I saw this over here at that place, or, you know, whatever. They compete off of each other's ideas.
Is there gonna be a chat ready?
Uh, not technically, it's not a chat room, but in effect, that's what takes place when you're applying off of each other's ideas, yeah.
Looks a lot like Facebook, Mark.
Yeah.
We could, uh, anybody post pictures, or...
Yeah, you can, uh, you can, uh, if you see, if you're in another town, and you see a great feature of the park or something, you can take a picture of it and say, I saw this at this other park, you know, do something, can we do something like that? So, it's really very flexible.
At the end of the day, though, um, council still has to make that core government decision, I learned in my first year on council, is, um, decision-making that's, um, balancing a limited amount of fiscal resources against an infinite number of things. I mean, you know, so, it will still, you know, we'll have a lot of great ideas, but at some point we'll have to answer the city's.
Well, that's really, that's really a perfect segue into this next part of the discussion. Um, now, please, shut that down. He might just kind of put you in the chair a little bit. So, so let's go from there into the conversation about, that's really super broad, citizen engagement input, now you're even getting a little bit narrower in the discussion of it, okay? And what I've handed out to you is, is just, is simply, since November 4th, we've had a lot of discussion as city staff next step forward. I mean, you've already heard some of that work that's gone on. This is just us boiling down the ideas that we have had as a place for you all to start and discuss about the committee, okay? Um, so let's start exactly where council and layup is going. And before, before you can even really talk about the committee, you gotta understand what is your role as city council? Uh, and I think it's important for the, for the citizens, the community to understand that as well, that you are, you all by law are the decision-makers, and you cannot delegate that. So when you talk about approving budgets, design contracts and concepts, construction contracts, timing and the amount of the bond issuance, appropriating bond funds, approving expenditures, all of that has to reside with city council. And I know you all know that, but I think it's important for the community to understand, you cannot hand that to a committee, you can't hand that to staff. You all have to do that. Uh, that's your responsibility. So then that kind of brings us to, okay, well then what do you need, and what is the role of a citizen committee? And, again, by nature of your responsibility as decision-makers, it's advisory. Their role is to give you feedback, to give you input. So what I've done is just tried to kind of start figuring out, okay, how does that look, uh, for a committee, you know, kind of some bullets of what their job description would, would look like. Uh, and I've got their, and this is not supposed to be, you know, all inclusive, it's just, again, our thoughts as staff to give you all a place to start from, but review and focus that broad community input. So you're gonna get tons of community input put on these soft, on software systems and otherwise. That committee is a great venue to start taking that and narrowing it, focusing it, pulling pieces together that make sense. Um, bringing simply their knowledge of the community into that discussion, okay? And I'm gonna come back and touch on that in a second. And feel free to stop, comment, whatever, as we go along. I think one of their key roles is to communicate accurate information to the community. So you're basically, committee members are going to be like, super educated citizens, because they're in meetings, and they're hearing it, they're involved in it, seeing it, so that when they're at church or the grocery store, or wherever else, you know, they can be good conduits of, oh yeah, here's where we are with X, Y, Z. I just got an update on that, or whatever, uh, and really be a good conduit out to the community. And then a really big role in providing feedback. So as Andrea, I think, mentioned, you know, there's gonna be lots of design work that has to be done. The committee is a great place to take the broad community input, to talk to the staff and to the designers, to refine those plans and those concepts, so that you're getting that community feedback before it's coming to you, okay? Before you have to make those final decisions, you know, you've touched a lot of bases, a lot of people have looked at these, a lot of ideas have gone into it. Um, at a high level, I think they can give you great feedback on budgets and priorities and timing. You know, you got forty million dollars to work with over ten years, if the designs are coming in, and one project is looking like it's gonna take up half of the budget, that committee would be a good place to say, ooh, I don't know, that may be a little high, you know? Give you that kind of feedback as a city council, and say, wow, you know, that's gonna have to pull money from other places, and, you know, maybe we need to tweak that design and, and scale it back, or whatever those cases may be. Uh, same with the expenditure piece, the budget expenditure kind of go together there, the timing of things. Provide broad community perspective. Uh, you know, it's easy for us in City Hall to get very myopic. This is what we do for a living, we understand things a certain way, we understand the language of local government. You know, it's really great when you're bringing other people into those discussions, because you're getting perspectives that you're not gonna get otherwise. Um, and then really the whole communicating piece, you know, to be a sounding board and to provide input and advice on how are we communicating, is are we doing a good job? You know, is there things, just like the Marriott, in effect, are there things we're missing in the way we're communicating? We're, we're missing out with people who don't have internet access, we need to understand that. We need to get ideas on, well, how can we address that? Um, and also the branding piece of it, and I'm gonna talk a little bit more about it in a second, but, um, my feeling, staff's feeling is, you know, with, with the positive bond referendum, you've got this great momentum to say out to the community, and I, I mean, within the Hickory community, but also to those businesses and people that we're interested in attracting here, a message of, wow, this community is gonna invest forty million dollars in itself, there are great things going on here, come and see, come and be part of this. Whether that's Scott Millar attracting people to Seventeen Sixty Four, or, you know, various commercial realtors trying to move properties along the city walk, you know, all of those things, I think we as a city need to have a really good message, a branded message in effect, that we're communicating internally with our residents and externally. And I think, I think your citizen committee can be a great place, you know, again, to hear drafts, to hear ideas, and then react to it, and say, well, we like this, we don't like that, you should tweak this, you should tweak that, does that make sense? And to keep refining it over time. So then we start getting into some of the, any other thoughts or ideas on kind of that, that job description again? And I, this is, this is staff's thoughts and ideas, just giving you all a place to start from. Anything glaring that we're missing there? Is that generally consistent with, with what you have been thinking a committee should be doing? Size and makeup. We feel like it's important that, that the committee is very reflective of the community. Uh, we've had a lot of discussion about, we've got this great committee that did the Inspiring Spaces work. Uh, do you continue on with those folks? Uh, if they want to, obviously people always have the option of dropping out of things if they kind of feel like, hey, I did my work, I've got other things I'm moving on to. Bottom line is, we feel like to get, you know, as broad a group as you would like, and it's just us thinking, that you probably have got a pretty big committee, probably twenty-five to thirty people, uh, which is a little different than things that we've done in the past. In the past, we've been much more in the ten to fifteen range. Uh, but when you think about how these projects are all over the city, and, and, you know, how you all will want to have lots of different people involved in those discussions, I mean, that's a big argument. Frequency, something we learned, uh, in the Inspiring Spaces, was that you've gotta have time in between meetings for the staff and for the professionals to actually do some work, so that they're coming back to the committee, they've got stuff. Um, if you're meeting too frequently, I think, A, you'll burn your committee members out, these are gonna be people who are busy, have got jobs, things going on. And, and, and your meetings may not be as effective, because you just have not had time to get designs done and work done that you really need to be bringing back to the committee at some one time. Um, so, our thought, again, has been maybe you set them up as quarterly, those are placeholders, and then you, you know, as the work is done, and you need the committee to meet, you're pulling them in, who you kind of know, once, when they get together, and you do what's going on. In terms of the scope, so, taking number one, you know, what do you need from the citizens, from the committee, and that list, and what are you gonna apply that list to? Uh, as I, as I've really thought a lot about this, I've kind of decided, in my own thinking, that you kind of got two different, two different types of projects here. You've got the purely community asset projects, so your Riverwalk, your City Walk, and all your gateways, wayfinding, streetscapes. Those are things that every single one of us and people who aren't even in the city are gonna use, okay? Seventeen Sixty Four, though, the business park, I think, is different. So on the community, on the, on the real, what I would consider true public assets, you want tons and tons of community involved. When you start talking about building a business park, I'm not so sure. I think in that regard, you've, you've got much more of a specialized thing that you're trying to do. Even, even a, a business park is specialized, but you're gonna even be more specialized within that, because you're gonna want a business park that's gonna be a certain type of business park. And you're gonna have to be very in tune with what are the amenities in a business park that are gonna attract the companies that we're looking for there. Um, you've got already a joint venture with the county, so you're gonna have city council and the county commissioners who have to jointly make decisions on that park. Uh, you've got your EDC board and your staff who will obviously be leading, and they'll be bringing to you all the plans. Uh, and you have the potential, you know, of other business parks and opportunities that come along in the next ten years, but today, we don't even know what those are. So my thinking has been that from the Seventeen Sixty Four park standpoint, the relationship with the citizens committee is more just updates. I, I just don't think you'll be nimble enough and be able to make crisp, quick decisions and stay in time with recruiting industry, you know, if there's a sense of, well, we gotta pull the committee together, they gotta review everything, and then it's gotta come to city council. I think you all are gonna have to play that role, and the county commissioners will have to play that role in Seventeen Sixty Four. And I would see, I would see the citizen committee of getting updates from Scott Millar... And I would see, I would see the citizen committee of getting updates from Scott Millar at their quarterly meetings, simply saying, here's where we are, here's what's going on. But them not having as much of a role in the community involvement because it is a specialized asset in, in the city council and county commissioners who are decision makers on, does that make sense? And we've kicked out around a lot of staff, and that's kind of where we've ended up. That, that feels like what we're going to need to do to be successful.
Yeah, I want to layer that one.
Right.
On what we need from the committee, I think there's one critical piece that this committee could involve and succeed in. And that is, how do we leverage these public dollars with private?
Yeah. I actually left that off and forgot to add it. I think that's a great discussion that needs to take place, is the whole fundraising piece.
Yeah, naming opportunities.
Right. I guess, Brad, we've kind of almost come to the mindset of, okay, do you really ask your whole committee to do that? Or does a subset of the committee and maybe other people become almost like a community foundation that's constantly looking to raise dollars? And the reason we thought that was we were concerned that if one of the banner things that you said of your citizen committee is to do fundraising, that you're going to have maybe a lot of otherwise really good people saying, you know, I'm just not a fundraiser and I'm not in those circles and so I don't want to serve on it? Again, that's just us talking, me talking.
I agree with that, just because there are certain mores that you can sit on and the expectation is that you are going to do fundraising. It does give some people pause that that's not their thing, but they don't want it.
So that's just my reaction, is that you probably have a subset of the committee that works with maybe another group of folks who really are in the fundraising mode, that's what they do, and there's cross pollination between the two. But if you're on the committee and, and you're not in those circles, you don't feel intimidated by the fact that, oh my goodness, I'm supposed to be helping raise X amount of dollars to fund, you know, whatever on the Riverwalk, or if that's just trying to be inclusive.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I get that, but I think that, I don't know, I wouldn't say, I don't think we pass the community with fundraising. So I think we, the community, provide guidance and opportunity.
Oh, yeah, okay, I got you.
Yeah.
You've got some more sense of, hey, we can make a connection, but this company.
Exactly, this makes sense, they, you know.
And then maybe they talk about, who would be a good to make that?
Or whatever, right, yeah, or they pass it on to.
And some of these things just come automatically when you're in the development stage, there are people that see the opportunity, and say, we then get out, going out and say, oh, by the way, do you want to contribute to this program? And they'll say, oh, I like that development that's happening, and I would like to do it harder than that. So sometimes it just, or happens, you know, without us knocking on doors.
Along the line with my idea, the program administrator slash project manager, is there going to be any, is that entity being grant standing?
They will certainly have that.
Yes. It'd be part of our, yeah.
That's right. That's part of what they can bring to the equation. So then I guess we're down to structure. Would you feel like it needs to be somewhat formal, there needs to be rules, a chair, attendance requirements? I mean, we see that, you know, we're talking about a decade's worth of work, we're talking about a committee that's going to be working for ten years, maybe a little longer. You're borrowing in year eight, seven, those projects are going to be built over, you know, beyond ten years potentially.
We can't really expect the same people to stay on for ten years.
Right, and that's why I think you've got this membership rotation, and, and these are purely things I just pulled up out of the air. I thought, do you have them in four-year staggered terms? Maybe, maybe four years is a long time, four times two is eight. You know, maybe you have it in three-year staggered terms, and, and a person could serve for two, three-year terms, six years, that's a pretty significant commitment. I think you do want them staggered, you don't want your whole committee going out and a whole new committee coming in and start over again, so you've got it rotating. And that way, over the course of ten years, you know, if you've got a committee of thirty and it turns over, you know, you've had sixty, at least sixty, you'll have people coming and going because they're moving and different things happen. You've got a potential of having seventy, eighty people who serve on that committee in that period of time, that's pretty solid. Again, this is just our thing. Hold on just a second, we can let's, as the mayor said, we'll, we'll take kind of comments and discussion and enjoy it with that. And then I've already talked about the branding piece, so I think one of the first things that we've got to wrap our hands around is what do you call this? Getting that good, tight, crisp, and, you know, I've had different discussions with you all and with others. Inspiring Spaces had good traction, that's out there, a lot of money was spent on boost to get that out there, but that was more of a campaign thing. I think that would have to be migrated to be something a little different, if you want to keep using the term boost. We've got great traction with Life Well Crafted, do we fill in the blank and call it something else Well Crafted? We just think it's important to have that good message that we all are into and it works, that, you know, again, we want realtors, I've already had realtors call me and ask, I tell people about the Riverwalk and the City Walk. You know, you want that message going out all over the community of what the investments of forty million dollars can do to this city to attract people, and that's what this whole thing is about. We can provide them, whether they're realtors or whoever, the media, that, you know, package that message, it'll generate traction. And I don't know what the answer to that is today. I think that's one of the things you all are able, the committee needs to work on pretty quickly, to decide, you know, what do you want to call it?
After you, we need to let you go.
Well, so, yeah, what I would suggest is next steps, if you all are, you know, eighty percent comfortable with this, we can put together a draft resolution to bring to you all, so you could actually create a committee by a resolution. That gives it, already, we've already done some work on some kind of rules and bylaw type of stuff, showing you a little more fleshdown on that, to bring you something more formal and tangible for you all to react to, potentially adopt. We proceed, is there a difference in how many, how many folks?
I'm surprised.
Yes, we're, we're in the fifty-six rank. I think you still need to push that for a little while longer, I mean, that's just come through the email blast that I sent out, I think you probably need to get some more media coverage. I think you needed to keep throwing that net out there for people who are interested in serving for probably another month or so. Push that out there so that no one feels like they have an interest in serving, or they missed the window, or they didn't get an email from me and they know they could or whatever, if you want.
It's also the opportunity.
Yeah, what have we had in snippets so far on it, Dana?
I think it's going into December, so.
December snippets, does it have the form where you can go sign up and stuff online?
Yeah, tell them where to go.
Yeah, okay.
And email.
So I think what would be great is if, you know, at the beginning of the year, if you all had, you know, everybody who's expressed interest, and then you can start looking at that and thinking about, you know, being representative of the community and being inclusive, you know, looking at that committee and starting to have some conversation of who starts in that first, first wave of the committee. And you could have already adopted the resolution, establishing your structure, and then come back maybe in January timeframe, actually.
You know, it's my opinion, it's just an opinion, that the council ought to take the task, the job of naming, or, you know, creating a brand for what this is. I think then we can be nice and clean and bundled up, and the resolution can say what that committee is, or the ordinance that can say what that committee is. But then, and then when people come out and they know what they're, what they're doing and what the name of that group is, I, I, I don't, I think people understand it sort of, you know, in a big way, or they're able to say, you know, boost for Resonance with them, or Inspiring Spaces, or whatever, but I think it's our job to, to give that to, to take it.
I think that's a great point, too, because I think it also sends the message to the committee that, look, we are the city council, we are the ultimate decision makers, we want, need your help, here's your vehicle. You've got your rules, you've got your, you've got your job description, you've got your name, go to work. Yeah, I think that does send a good message of how connected they are to you all, how much you all care about it, that you've given them some structure and framework. And the name says a lot about it.
And I think it's more than a name, I mean, it's not a goal more than a name, but it's, but there's some graphic elements associated with it, that it's consistent across, you know, websites, print materials, or whatever. We don't have anybody in the staff that's capable of that.
Not good.
Not yet.
We draw stiff figures and we do stuff, all the pattern, because that's pretty cool stuff.
So it might need to have, get some help with that.
Innovation Well Crafted. And just, and just your proposal.
I think it could be each to be.
I think it might be three, three, four, four.
Yeah, three, three-year, two, three-year terms?
Actually, two, two.
There's more opportunities like, you know, four years is a long time, you know.
Let the, the interest of just being fair, let, let the, let the equally volunteer choose. The first group's going to have, ask one years, two years, three years, right? I don't believe that, I mean, or do we want to say, everybody's got a three-year term, and then some have three plus one, some have three plus two, some have three plus three? Oh, that's my group, I'm sorry.
Something out there, yes.
But I want you to give them the opportunity to choose what term they want, first of all. And then if not enough people choose what term they want and work out, then you have a random drawing out of my head. Rather than somebody else deciding, we want you to be a six-year person, we want you to be a five-year person. But every person on this committee is equally important. That's my group.
Any other thoughts or discussion on that? I'm walking out here with a sense of consensus that you want us to take this list and generate a resolution. I'm not sure how.
I think, I mean, I think this is a great start. I think it addressed us a long time, that we were pumped to come up with, had y'all kind of already come up with it, and it's a, it's a great tool for community to go for.
I'm a little, I'm with you, Brad, but I don't know exactly how to go forward on the name and the brand piece, other than us repeating five or six things and telling it to y'all and then y'all tweak it, unless y'all want us to hire somebody to do it, we certainly, I, I certainly feel like it rises to that level. But that, you know, and then you've got to kind of go through a process with the term you hire.
Well, North started the Life Well Crafted, Ron. Could they just jump in and do this as an adjunct, I mean, potentially? They know us.
Yes, they could, that's.
And tagging on that craftsmanship would not be a bad idea somehow or another. And I agree with you about what Hickory, I mean, that is a continuation of Hickory Well Crafted.
Right.
Is this now, this is a final big thing now? Let's complete Hickory Well Crafted.
Would y'all be comfortable with that? I mean, that would be, that would be an easy, quick thing for us to do, we heard that already has done a ton of research on this, knows this well. And frankly, our branding's been so successful, they've been using us to promote their services all over the country, and, and other entities in the area that have jumped on them, so I think it only helps and I.
Hickory Well Crafted.
It worked. Okay, we'll do some, we'll do some work on that.
Maybe it looks like it's as fast as it does and keeps her ball.
Okay, last thing on your agenda is to ask Scott Mitchell to come up, and we had it on your agenda Tuesday night, whether or not I'm able to relay the information. I don't think Scott's ready for you to take action today, but he does want to give you an update on where we are with the parking deck.
So you want me up there or here?
Yeah, I want you to stand up there, Ron, and Scott, just tell them what's, what's going on, and let them hammer you into the ground.
All right, to refresh everybody's memory, when we started the parking deck, we chose to build pre-cast parking deck, and this kind of nebulous situation in a public bid, construction documents have to be generic enough that you open it to anybody that wants to bid it. So the foundation design is totally dependent upon pre-cast contractor that you get. So now we've got the pre-cast contractor, Timbo out of Greendale, and we've got deep foundations, because of the inconsistency of the soil. So once the pre-cast design drawings come in, we're designing the foundations. They're pretty much where we thought. Good news is, we're way under budget, but the bad news is, we've got to come back for a change order for the foundations. Now what we chose to do was bid the foundation, we've got piles, that are essentially a screw that goes into the ground, filled with concrete. That's by far the cheapest way to do it, and the most, least damage to the commission center. We went on driving, so it's a very soft, noisy operation. We've done cell tests at this point, we tested two piles to come up with design numbers for the foundations. And the bid documents were based on sixty-five foot pile depth. Got about four, they're driving some today, got about four to six piles at this point, and we're probably averaging eight. Now, the best thing to do is to be conservative, because you're always going to pay more than what you give back. In other words, we've got unit prices listed on the contract forms, so we have a fixed amount in the contract, it's just a matter of establishing legal footage. And you pay sixty dollars a linear foot more, but you only get back forty. So we were conservative with bid documents. The original budget for the parking deck was three point two six. The bid documents under contract is two point five seven, so we've got a lot of leeway. We anticipated about two hundred thousand in the foundation, and I think the TDA is pushing three million. But right now, as of today, we think it's going to be in the one fifty to one sixty territory, that we have to come back for a change order. Now, that in, that in itself is a dilemma. We'll talk it out, but the foundation contractor's going to hold some assurances when he gets to the contracted amount, that he's going to get his change order. But it came to find the change order until we get the piles finalized. So we're probably, just thinking through it, maybe a letter of intent or something when we get to that point, that we have to bring to council, to keep the pile contractor on site. Definitely opens some suggestions there, but it's kind of a catch-22. The good news is, we're under budget.
Are they looking at the documents of the binders? Is that, are the binders?
That, that's probably what they would want, for their safety. Now, again, we've got a third-party testing firm, it's local, Todd Valley Testing, is measuring each one of the piles, so we know we're getting straight answers out of it. Probably get to that point in December, first of January, to whatever council meeting's close to that now. But, and they may, they may not ask for that, I'm just anticipating, won't give you an update. It may, we can put their responsibility on Matthews Construction, you know, for our motive, but they would do it if there is. But I would anticipate they wouldn't want to do that. Does that clears dirt? Tears of poor soil? Yeah, the, the original soil test was so inconsistent, we hit the original ground some places to fifteen feet, some places went to a hundred feet, so we just had to take an average, that's all we could do. And luckily, it's, it's right where we thought it would be, so it's no surprise, it's just a hard way to go.
The TDA has a contingency of four hundred, forty-three thousand?
Yeah, they're anticipating, DB's here to make sure, but they were anticipating far in three million, which was contracted amount is two. in three million, which the contracted amount is two point five seven six. So we're, either worst case, we're going to go under that, that threshold. Any questions?
So we need to come back, you all, Scott, when do you anticipate having the final?
It stays on schedule, we don't get too much rain somewhere around the end of December, first of January, we'll have, we'll be close to the end of foundation design.
So that third-party engineer is actually certifying the length of each of the piles?
Each of the piles.
And the fact that it's bearing on solid earth or whatever, the pressure.
That's correct, yeah. It's really, if they're, you know, they're working for the city, so they're a third-party, it's up to them to verify the numbers.
And they will give us a document?
They will.
That does say so, yeah. I mean, that's a, clearly we've got to have it resting on solid earth, I mean, there's no doubt about that, so.
So that's just information, so y'all understand what's going on, and then we'll be back to the appropriate change order.
Yep.
Thank you, Scott.
Okay.
That was all we have for now.
Well, we said, we, we, we had you to one thirty if you wanted to, and we said we had a little time, we would entertain questions or comments from the audience, so we're going to give you a few minutes now, please say good luck.
Please, yeah.
Well, I take it that, Bernie, you all have just absolutely answered every question that you know it has.
I think it's we called everybody and told what we were doing and said, "Come out and support us."
Well, maybe it's just that we don't quite understand what our questions might be yet.
I didn't want you planting that in their heads.
It's already in mind.
Well, thank you all for being here, we appreciate your interest and commitment to innovative Hickory Well Crafted.
Oh, Ralph, hey, Louis.
Boo, yeah.
Boo, yeah, Hickory Well Crafted.
It can happen.
Having a nice day.